Yeah, go. Good evening, everyone. Can you hear me? Can everyone hear me? Good.
Yes.
Welcome to the April 6 meeting of the Rochester Planning Commission, a virtual meeting, as you can all see. And with that, I see a lot of faces out here, but I'd ask Maureen to call the roll.
Really? Chairman McGee.
Here.
Vice Chairman Lord.
Here.
Mayor Bixson.
Here.
Mayor Protem and Secretary Bavacqua. Commissioner Gosson.
Here.
Commissioner Clark Martin.
Here.
Commissioner Gregitis.
Here.
Commissioner Patruskoff.
Here.
Commissioner Stone.
Here.
We have a quorum.
We have a quorum. Amazing technology. Thank you, Maureen. At this point, please join me with the Pledge of Allegiance to the Flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation, indivisible, liberty, and justice for all. Thank you. At this point, number three, public comment. Do we know if we have any members of the public involved in this call tonight?
There are no, there are no members of the public, and we have not any correspondence via email.
Very good. Thank you. Let me just say, because I know this is being broadcast live, this meeting is being held virtually. And Governor Whitmer issued Executive Order Number 2020-15 on Wednesday, March 18, 2020. The law for local governing bodies, bodies including their boards and committees, to conduct remote meetings and expressly suspend compliance with Section 3 of the Open Meetings Act to alleviate physical presence requirements in recognition of the threat imposed by the COVID-19 virus. Therefore, here we are, meeting tonight, handling the regular agenda of the Planning Commission. The votes that the commissioners take tonight count, which is exceptional. As you know, it always, the rule has always been, and will return to, where commissioners or council people actually have to be in the room for the vote to count. So this is really an exceptional experience that we're all going through right now. Number four is approval of the minutes of the regular meeting of March 2, 2020. Very lengthy meeting and a very significant set of minutes. Everyone had a chance to review. And are there any corrections, additions, deletions?
So moved.
I have one, Maureen, I know you can hear me. This is, this is on page 7 of 11, and it's in my comments. Second last paragraph. If you recall, I was talking about the fact that Mr. Randazzo had not at that point requested brownfield credits for cleaning up the proposed site of his apartment complex. And I pressed him to make a commitment as to whether or not he was going to do so. And he made a commitment on the record that if he were to gain site plan approval, he would not apply for brownfield tax credits. I don't know if everyone else has that same recollection of what occurred. And, but I'm quite sure on that, and I would like to make sure that's very clear in the minutes, Maureen, even if you have to go back and review the tape to make sure we got the actual language down. Because if this project ever goes forward, that's, that's a fairly important item.
Oh, I recall that. I do. Okay.
All right. Any others? Okay, I have no others, and someone had made a motion.
Yeah, I did. So moved.
The mayor's made a motion to approve, and is there support?
Support.
Supported by Eric Lord?
Correct.
Roll call, please.
Bavacqua?
Yes.
Bixson?
Yes.
Clark Martin?
Yes.
Gosson?
Steve.
Gregitis?
Yes.
Lord?
Yes.
McGee?
Yes.
Patruskoff?
Yes.
Stone?
Yes.
Okay, thank you very much. Number five, bittersweet item, acceptance of the resignation of Planning Commissioner Brian Gagitas. Brian, we hate to see you go. Why don't you take a couple of minutes and tell us about the next venture you're having in your life?
Well, thank you. It is a little bittersweet. I've had a great time serving on this commission with all of you, and it's been a, been a really good time. But I've been afforded the opportunity to go work for the Naval Weapons Station out in Virginia. And that puts me closer to where my kids are at out there, and a whole new endeavor to embark on. And I'm looking forward to those, those challenges and what we have. I'll be working for the Navy, doing pretty much the same type of engineering, same, same position that I do now for Self-Reg National Guard.
Very good. What's the name of the base you're going to?
It is Naval Weapons Station. It's in Yorktown, Virginia.
Okay, not in DC then, a little bit south.
It is south of DC. It's right off of 64 in the Hampton Roads area.
Oh, way down there, yeah.
Yeah, so it's, it looks like a nice area, everything I've learned about it. And looking about the 20, 25th around the beach out. So pretty quick turnaround and so, but I've appreciated working with all of you. And this has been, been really neat, opened my eyes to a lot of things that I had no idea about, you know, go on and behind the scenes here.
I think I'm speaking for, speaking for all the commissioners and telling you thanks for a short but eventful time with us on the Planning Commission. We, we really appreciate you having come forward in your little adopted city here and getting involved. We surely wish you all the best in the future.
Staff too. Very much, Brian. You're a good guy.
Thank you, sir. Appreciate that all. I'll miss all of you, and I know the city's in good hands.
I think we need a motion then to accept the resignation of Brian from the Planning Commission.
So moved.
And do we have support?
Support.
And regretfully, we'll call the roll here, Maureen.
Bixson?
Yes.
Clark Martin?
Yes.
Gosson?
Yes.
Gregitis?
Yes.
Lord?
Yes.
McGee?
Yes.
Patruskoff?
Yes.
Stone?
Yes.
Bavacqua?
Yes.
Very good. Thank you.
And Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
I'd just say I will be appointing a new person as soon as possible. Maybe, maybe I'll just do it right now and appoint Justin Gretsch back to the Planning Commission.
Is this someone who had been on before?
Yeah, I was just kidding. He doesn't live in town anymore.
I'm sure you have some very good people in mind, and we look forward to the appointment.
Thank you.
Mayor Bixson, I would like to state that our office has received a few inquiries about taking a seat on the Planning Commission, and I will provide those to you this week. So you, and obviously, if you have someone that you'd like to recommend, you can certainly do that as well.
Yeah, thank you. Send me those as soon as you can.
I sure will.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, number six, public hearing for the consideration of a site plan for facade changes for University Trails Medical located at 1,000 West University Drive. Vidia, Madam Planner.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. At the city's request, we have reviewed a proposal from James Barnas on behalf of Rochester Real Estate Holdings to make changes to an existing building and site to accommodate medical offices. You're all familiar, the site is located on the northwest corner of West University and Helen Avenue. Has about 2.3 acres and is bound by Oakwood Private Apartments to the north. Medical and office supply store to the west, Helen Avenue with law offices and medical offices to the east. The site is-
Is it possible to put the diagram up in the site plan?
As soon as I start the site plan review comments, I will be sharing the screen with actual site plan and pointing out the details.
Thank you.
The applicant appeared before the Planning Commission on February the 2nd, February the 3rd for a preliminary hearing and received feedback. And since then, they have made changes and submitted a revised site plan. Is everybody able to see the site plan on your screens at this time?
Yeah.
Yeah.
With regard to the use, medical and dental offices with no beds for overnight accommodations is a principal permitted use in this district. The site is occupied by a vacant building that was previously used as medical offices. The applicant is proposing extensive site and building renovations to continue with the medical office use of the building. With regard to access, I will see if I can minimize the screen. The site. Just go a little bit.
Yeah, that's very good.
Okay, here I go. This, this is, okay. So the site is located at the northwest corner of West University and Helen. There are two existing access drives into the site, both of which are 24 feet wide and proposed to be retained. The applicant is going to keep them as is. However, the parking lot entirely is going to be restriped and laid out better for more functionality. Our recommendation, however, is that the applicant strip lanes of ingress and egress over here on the pavement for both sides, just so it is clear that both of them offer dual circulation in and out of the site. With regard to pedestrian circulation, the site has existing five-foot-wide concrete sidewalks along both street frontages. It is over here where my cursor is pointing. The clarification required is, is there, the applicant is proposing extensive renovations along the facade on West University. And there is a great change with steps down. So if there are any ramps located in this area, they need to be clarified and shown when they go for their building. The next item is parking. Parking requirements for medical office use is one space for every 200 square feet of gross flow area. At this time-
Can you reduce that one more, one more degree? Just reduce it down one more?
You want me to, this way?
Yeah, then we can see the, the bar of members is blocking the, the south part of the site or the bottom part of the site.
Ah, okay.
Push it up a little, that's perfect, right there.
Okay, perfect. On my screen, the members appear on the right, so I thought this would be visible, but I'm glad you can see it now. With regard to parking, the applicant has adjusted the building square footage since the previous plan. So at this time, the square footage is shown as 35,847 square feet. And the building, according to the applicant, includes professional and medical offices. Now, medical offices require one space for every 200 square feet. Professional offices require one space for every 300 square feet. Based on the floor space, the site requires a total of 170 parking spaces, and they are shown on the site plan. If the commission recollects, previously, the applicant had shown a row of banked parking spaces over here. And our comment was spaces cannot be banked if they are required at this time. So based upon the revised parking calculations, no banked spaces is required. So the applicant is just proposing a straight curb and an almost 30-foot-wide green belt in this area. With regard to loading, there is one loading space shown over here. It's not dimensioned. But based on the scale, it's 10 foot by 40 feet. This is not the most ideal location, but this building will receive deliveries probably right inside the front door. And a delivery vehicle parked over here is not going to block circulation through the site. So considering the proposed possible locations for the loading space, this is a reasonable location that is shown, and we find it to be acceptable. With regard to dumpster, the plan proposes a new dual dumpster on the northwest corner of the site. Details are included, and this is going to be constructed of split-faced block with steel-reinforced wooden gates as required. With regard to facade changes, the existing building is constructed of brick and metal panels. It's a little bit dated. The proposal at this time, under the elevations, let me scroll to the elevation so the board can see what is being proposed. Just slide down a little bit. There aren't significant exterior changes proposed to the building facade itself, except for some cleanup. Sorry, it's a lot of engineering sheets, landscaping. I'll come back to that. Photometrics. Back. Dumpster. Sorry, this is a little slow. And we, floor plans. And finally, the facade. The applicant is not proposing any significant facade changes. If you look, the main changes proposed are to the north entrance, where patients will be dropped off or will be coming through. They're proposing a canopy addition. And if you look at the south elevation, it's pretty much the same. Most of the change is being done only on the exterior. I just wanted the applicant, however, to clarify tonight if any changes are proposed to the actual facade entry, because they are making significant changes to the landscape area and the brick paver tiers, terrace that is right in front of it. With regard to lighting, the site plan proposes, I will scroll back to the site plan, if I may. The site plan proposes several dual head light poles. Okay. One second, and here is the lighting plan. The applicant is proposing several dual head light poles in the parking lot. If you look at it, all of the islands, all of the poles are located within landscape island, except for these two poles on the north end of the site. For some reason, they are shown located within the parking lot. It has been our experience that in winter, with snow removal, the pole base does get damaged when it's located in a parking lot. There are landscape islands less than 18 feet further away from them. Our recommendation is that these poles actually be placed inside these islands to give a consistent design to the site. So all of the poles are located within islands for a better designed site. The maximum permitted light pole height is 20 feet. Now, the site plan notes the pole height as 20 feet. But it's not clear whether this is the fixture mounting height or the actual pole height. This can be clarified at the time of installation. The pole height from the grade to the top of the fixture needs to be 20 feet. So that's just-
Just so I don't forget my question, could those two proposed new islands be built around those existing poles?
We would actually prefer the islands to remain where they are shown on the site plan, because it defines the circulation aisle at that end. Relocating the islands might not be a good idea, because then you'll have a few spaces on the other side of the island, which will result in people parking partly in the main driveway if there is nothing to block them from doing that.
So the base of those two poles are just the typical concrete base?
I believe so. So if applicant is redoing the entire parking lot, so it is reasonable to assume the electrical is also being redone. So when the poles are being installed there, another 18 feet further to the north, hopefully shouldn't be, not feasible. So when the applicant presents, we can ask for that clarification. The plan does not indicate, there are existing light poles along the site's West University frontage. The plan does not show any kind of wall-mounted fixtures. We just need clarification whether any fixtures are proposed in this canopy area. If it's under the canopy, that is fine. But if any of the fixtures are going to be visible, we need to see what they are, because you do have apartments located further to the north. Regarding landscaping, I'll scroll to the landscape plan, which I believe is, is it above or below this? The landscape plan, no, landscape plan, I think is on the other. If I could go up. The applicant has submitted a pretty extensive and, oh, I'm back to the site plan. But the applicant has submitted a pretty extensive landscape plan. They're going to regrade and maintain the landscaping along both street frontages. They're going, just going to smooth out the grade and keep it. They are retaining a stone maintenance strip that is currently along the building foundation. And they will incorporate a non-colored concrete border on both sites, just for a limited distance over here, they are going to incorporate it. So the building entrance looks nice. There are trees, shrubs, and decorative plantings at both the north and the south entrance of the buildings, which makes it attractive, plus foundation plantings along here. Each of the landscape islands in the parking lot will be planted with Patriot elm trees and low-growing fragrant sumac bushes. So the proposed method of irrigation has not been noted on the site plan. It is our recommendation that automatic irrigation be provided, because the site is pretty big. There is extensive landscape areas all along, you know, you have a 30-foot landscape border here, you have landscape border here, and all along the building. Manually watering it by hand is simply not feasible. So we would definitely recommend installation of automatic irrigation system. As to signage, at this point of time, there is an existing sign located at the corner, and the applicant just intends to resurface the sign and use it. We recommend that they use perennial shrubs at the base rather than seasonal plants, because perennial shrubs provide some kind of green over the yard. It's also our understanding that the applicant has submitted a request for a variance from wall signage, and that will be administratively reviewed. After our review letter was done, the applicant's architect did submit a letter addressing most of the concerns. However, it's been the city's policy that we don't review responses once the Planning Commission packet has been distributed, because then the comments don't match the plan that the Planning Commission has in its packet. However, the applicant is free to address those concerns at the meeting. Based upon our review of the proposal, it is our recommendation at this time that the Planning Commission grant site plan approval for University Trails Medical Center to be located at 1,000 West University Drive, subject to line conditions. Of lanes of ingress and egress at each access right. Clarification regarding barrier-free access ramps of West University. Relocation of two light poles to landscape islands. Limiting the maximum height of light pole from grade to top of fixture to 20 feet. Clarification regarding any light fixtures on building exterior. Installation of automatic irrigation for landscape. Installation of perennial shrubs at sign base. Review and approval of all signage by the zoning board of appeals and/or administration prior to installation. Finally, city engineer approval of site engineering. These are quite a few conditions that are listed, so it is our recommendation that the applicant address all of these on a revised set of plans and submit it to the city for final administrative review. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions for Vidia from the commissioners? Okay, is the petitioner here this evening?
Yeah. Hold on a second. There I am.
I hear you.
Yes, I, I can address the questions and comments that were brought-
Would you just quickly identify yourself?
Yeah, this is Jim Barnas. I'm the owner of Contracting Resources and the owner of the building.
Hi, Jim.
How you guys doing? It's good to be back. Thanks, thanks for meeting. I appreciate this, because we, we did close on the building a couple of weeks ago, and we're anxious to get started. So we, we do need this approval, so we can get going. So a couple of, I was noting some of the comments that need clarification. The vertical surface of all the facades, there's no work that's planned. The only, the only work on the outside of the building that's vertical is the entrance canopy. The, the two poles, I, I'll take your recommendation, but I'm not sure we're going to ultimately change it. The, there was something in the ordinance that had to do with island placement, the maximum distance between islands. So I think that's where the islands ended up being for the ordinance. And to be honest with you, if we have parking, we have, we have parking that's all the way at the back of the site, that's a good problem. I don't know if that'll ever happen, because, you know, that, the building would have to be at mass, maximum capacity for people even to park back there. The, there will be lighting underneath the canopy. It hasn't been designed yet. It'll probably be a handful of fixtures that just chime down on the concrete that light the egress into the building. The irrigation system will be automatic, so that was a question as well. Was there anything that I missed? I think I addressed all the questions, and, and as, as indicated, we did give a response letter to all the, the engineering and planning comments, which I understand you can't distribute, but it was responded to. I think that's all I had.
Of the, of the nine items you listed, Vidia, which ones does he address here?
I would just like clarification regarding the light pole thickness, Barnas. It's still going to be maximum 20 feet, correct? Just wanted to-
Yeah, it's from grade to top of poles, 20 feet, and there will be concrete bases. The time is flying. I think they're 30-inch concrete.
Are you going to be installing fixtures, any other exterior wall-mounted structure on the building other than the canopy?
Nope, just those six poles, six pole lights, and then the canopy, entrance canopy lighting, the other. That's the only site lighting we're adding.
I think that is good, Mr. McGee, except I wanted Mr. Barnas to know that if the Planning Commission recommends that those light poles to the island, they become a condition. It wouldn't be optional at that point, so you will be required to move the poles. I just want you to understand that and not get confused later.
Well, there's, there's also a foot handle layout for even distribution of lighting. I don't think we want to move the poles out that far, because we may end up with adding two more poles and two more islands. I don't think it's necessary.
If I could ask for clarification, the pole, we are requiring you to move it only by 18 feet. I don't think that is going to change your lumens level in the parking lot at all. The site is well lit. Your photometric is really good. I just think for the site's appearance and for the long-lasting of your poles, I mean, you're installing and investing in new poles. I think they will survive a lot better if they are in the islands. That's just a better site design. That's the reason for the recommendation. You'll still meet all the ordinance requirements, even if you put it in that island.
We can have the engineer that did the, the foot handle layout, we can have him take a look at it. If it meets the foot handle layout, then we'll consider putting it in the-
Yes, I'm not recommending addition of any more poles. I think the poles you have is fine for the parking lot, and your engineer should easily be able to adjust the foot handle and just put those poles in there. So I don't think it should be materially different for you in executing the site plan.
So, in other words, we're requiring that those poles be moved into the two new islands?
It, it can be, unless the engineer says that it's completely not feasible or results in the need for additional poles.
So we could include them subject to city engineering approval or?
No, subject to, if you could say subject to planning approval, because the engineer doesn't review the lighting specifications, I do. So I can speak with Mr. Barnas's electrical person.
Okay. Any questions for Mr. Barnas before I open the public hearing? Okay, we will open the public hearing on this item at 7:27. And I would ask if there are any members of the public who wish to express anything about this particular item, either online or if we've received anything in writing. See, on our Maureen, have we received any communications at all on this?
I have not received anything from anyone, so I would-
Okay, that's fine. All right, I'll, I'll close the public hearing at 7:28. And the item is now in front of the planning commissioners for review and comment. Any input?
I have a few question comments.
Please, go ahead.
On the, the site plan sheet, SP, the dumpster indicated calls out some specifications on that enclosure. Had been 10 by 23 and a dimension of 25 feet, just directly on front of it, particularly on the detail sheet. It references the 12-foot dimensions. And I'm not really sure if graphics indicate what's, or that what's indicated is the same as graphics. I would think the pad is not 10 feet. It's more like 25 by 25. And I think we require a concrete pad out in front of that dumpster enclosure. So maybe that notation needs to be corrected or changed to mean active to the graphic. Maybe more like 25 by 25, maybe input from Vidia?
Yes.
Suggestion wise, it just, it doesn't seem that it jives between the different sources of information, the graphics, the note on SP and the detail on D2 or DT2.
Okay.
You see what I mean?
Yes.
D2 reference says 12 feet, and it should be more like 10 feet out in front of that. Is there a number that we need to have out in front of an apron for, or out in front of the dumpsters, an apron?
The city does have specifications so that the apron can take the load off the trash truck that picks it up. So we can make sure that the pad size is consistent on the notes, what is shown on the site plan, and also on the detail that is in the plan packet.
Okay. And just, I, I think I know the answer to the question, but the elevation of the dumpster gate is not what we're going to see from the parking lot. is not what we're going to see from the parking lot side. That's what you see on the inside. See all that cross bracing on the outside.
No, the cross bracing will be on the inside. The actual wood will be on the outside. Typically, that's how it is. The bracing would be on the inside of the gates.
That's what I assumed. I just started bringing up since it wasn't clearly noted. The other two things are more important to me. Being such a major improvement and enhancement to the site, the building presents outside. The front or West University improvement landscaping, the change to what was more of a modest entry is not clear. What I see is not barrier-free accessible. Maybe I could be corrected, but I couldn't find enough information to say otherwise. And I think it should be, based on the building floor plan, it shows that is the major lobby. When you look at the floor plan, obviously, it's not from a general standpoint of approaching the building. Arkansas to the north, when you look at A2 or 0.01, the floor plan shows the lobby size toward the West University is the biggest lobby, yet it's not accessible to the sidewalk on West University.
This is Jim Barnas. Just for clarification, the, the south side is just for emergency egress only.
So this is the area Mr. Gassen is referencing to. This is the entrance of university and this is the entrance of the parking lot. So Mr. Gassen's concern is whether this is barrier-free accessible, and that was one of the questions that was in our review letter with regard to pedestrian access. But Mr. Barnas is stating that this is a secondary and emergency access. This lobby is the primary access of the parking lot. Is that right, Mr. Barnas?
Yeah, that's correct. No one's ever going to use that south side unless there's an emergency.
Okay. What represented has given me a couple other thoughts. One, you're doing some nice enhancements there with the landscaping and tiered elevations there. If, if that's not, we'll call it public access, maybe it's going to function as employee or staff or occupant recreation or break area. Making a big assumption there.
Yeah, let me, let me put a little clarification. Now, the reason we're doing all the work on the south side is honestly is just exposure. The, the, there's currently a, a set of planners there that are all tore up. The mortar's cracked, the free cast is falling off of it. So, and the grade actually is a little bit higher. So what we're doing, if you look at the drawings, we're actually adding a drainage system along that south side because that's, that part of the building is actually below grade. So we're lowering the grade, we're adding field drains and we're putting that terrace entrance in just to give the building a lot more exposure from university. That's, that's the only reason we're really doing the work because we don't need to do the work at all. We're just trying to dress it up. So again, no, I don't, I don't ever see anybody using that entrance. It's purely cosmetics. That's the reason we're doing the work.
Is that barrier free today?
No.
So the building was not built with that?
Yeah, it's been, it's been non-barrier free for, for 40 years.
And barrier free 40 years ago wasn't a concern, but it is today. And I get what you're saying. I truly do. You're enhancing it and making it welcoming as a feature to the building. It could be misunderstood as someone wanting to go there.
Well, that, there, on the glass doors, there will be vinyl graphics that say this is not an entrance. This is egress only.
So if I accept that as not as an entrance, although I think it should be barrier-free regardless. I accept that as not an entrance for someone going to the building. If it's just a place for occupants to go as a recreation. I conceivable is how it will be used.
I don't, to be honest with you, I don't, I don't anybody see, I don't ever see anybody even being out there.
Then I would have the question, why do what you're doing? Because it's really making it a welcoming or inviting element to the building.
It's a reasonable point.
I would downplay it because you're going to invite someone there that might get stuck. Anyway. If a building occupant leaves and it's not an entry or accessible, then they're stuck. If they're in wheelchair, they can't get to the sidewalk because the building door will lock. I'm making a big assumption there. That's a, a point I would make. I don't know how to take it any further than I have other than it's an opinion of mine, strong opinion that it shouldn't be accessible. Being from a planning standpoint, you don't have to. But I do believe if you're doing what you're doing, you should go the extra yard and make a ramp there. Make it accessible or maybe downplay it because it looks like an entry to the building.
Understood.
The other element to the package, extensive and very clear from all the site development. The architectural improvement doesn't, doesn't clearly illustrate what you're doing or the full scope of it. It's very, I'll call it understated as a person to the site development details and information. Such as what are the materials? I mean, you called out some general materials there in the elevation on sheet 84.01. Maybe I'm a little more accustomed to seeing more information.
I thought in the first packet, we, we did do a rendering and I thought we included that in the package two months ago. If we didn't, it, I'm pretty sure it was submitted. Yeah, we had, we had a, we were drawn up. It's going to be cold stone that's tapered at the bottom and it's going to be a metal fabricated roof with metal gutters. It's a little nice.
And that may be the case. I don't have a packet from a couple of months ago, so I'll let my peers to comment on that. I just didn't see enough information to grasp totally what you're doing. I pieced it together in my head, but there's just not enough in the packet. And maybe the point to comment on how previous documents and information is folded into an approval packet if it wasn't included in the packet. I'm not sure how that works.
Well, typically every submission has to stand independently, even if an elevation is submitted with the first submittal, it is resubmitted because not everybody saves their packets. And when the city scans in the packet for the public to see, each comes as a set together. We did not receive the colored rendering with this particular set, but yes, the applicant had presented it when they were before the planning commission at the last meeting to show what the entrance is going to look like.
Well, if I understood you right, Madam Planner, then you're requiring that information to be submitted as part of this?
Yes, as part of site plan approval, if they could just give the colored rendering and the details again, Mr. Barnas, that would be good.
Who would you like that email to?
All the submissions come through Siona at the city.
Okay, I can email it to Siona.
Mr. Chairman, those are the only comments I had and.
Thank you, David. As usual, very insightful. Any other commissioners that have comments?
Yeah, I'll just have a comment. Commissioner Joff Patricoff with regard to the south entrance. I would just indicate, I understand the desire to have barrier-free access on all of the entrances. I would just indicate with regard to the south entrance, considering I don't see that any of the individuals that would actually require or need barrier-free access going around the entire building to use that entrance. I don't see really the practicality or necessity for that south entrance being barrier-free. That's my only comment with regard to that.
I would agree.
Mr. Barnas, can you sign that distinctly and clearly that it's not, or that the barrier-free access is to the rear?
I apologize. What was the question again?
If, if in fact you're not required to make it barrier-free, could you at least sign the south entrance to note that the barrier-free access is from the parking lot on the north side?
Sure.
Mr. McGee, just for a clarification also, somebody in a wheelchair will not even be able to get to the south entrance because there's a sidewalk and then there are three stepped tiers that reach up to the front entrance of the building. So hopefully anybody who does need barrier-free access will actually park in the parking lot in the barrier-free spaces and going through the north entrance. This entrance is just going to be pretty. Literally, it, it is set several feet from the public sidewalk with three tiers down. So nobody in a wheelchair is going to attempt to go to this door and open it. They can't get to it.
It, it's not practical. I mean, why would anybody take the time to go all the way around the building when they're parking on the other side, when they have an entrance canopy and they can, you know, basically get right into the building? And there's a drop-off area. I mean, it's, it's not practical.
Mr. Chairman, if you could follow up, this is David Gassen again.
Yes, go ahead.
My points were just reiterated there by the planner in fact saying you couldn't get to the front door from the sidewalk because there aren't tiers and there aren't ramps. That is my point. Not everyone that visits this building will be driving. Some will be coming from the neighboring. Is around there and the other points were made is the amount being done there. Why isn't part of it barrier-free? If you're going to do that much work, why isn't it? That's, that's a question. I, I understand the answer. It doesn't have to be. I get that. But if you're going through the amount of work and level of redevelopment there, it's kind of easy to do or it is downplay it, so don't invite anybody to the front. I'll leave it at that. I think whenever we can, we should make it barrier-free, no matter what it is.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Yes, I have a comment. This is Patricia Clark Martin.
We see you.
Do you? Okay. Mr. Barnas, the only, I, I think that it, it looks beautiful and you've done a lot of work with the landscape around the parking lot. So the only concern that I have is that maybe you might, you have 183 dense ewe surrounding the parking lot. And given our deer population, I'm just afraid it's going to become an issue. So perhaps there could just be a, a different plant selection for that. Because I, I have a feeling you'll be doing a lot of maintenance with that.
That's interesting. I'm, I'm an hour away out in Brighton and I that's pretty interesting that you've got a deer population in that kind of urban environment.
We do.
I'll tell you, Mr. Barnas, year after year, Rochester, Rochester Hills is the site of more car deer accidents than anywhere in the state of Michigan.
Interesting.
Yeah. When I was driving home from work, when I was driving home from work, there'd regularly be about five deer in front of one house on the way home right in your neighborhood. So it's a, there's a fairly concentrated population of deer here that make themselves known.
Interesting, okay.
Catch, Patty. Anyone else?
So is the recommendation to substitute the ewe species with something else that is more deer resistant?
Yes, like perhaps sea green juniper or something.
Okay, I think that's the end of the discussion if I'm seeing and hearing correctly. Does anyone have a motion?
So moved.
Vidya, which point, which points in this motion should we include?
May I suggest that the recommendation be subject to the Mekana review letter dated March 27, 2020, with the addition of two conditions, substitution of the proposed ewe species with a deer-resistant plant species and revision to the detail of the dumpster pad and notes to correspond on all sheets. And that all of the conditions need to be addressed on revised and dated set of plans submitted for administrative review, just so we can make sure that everything is taken care of.
I believe we're also adding the condition that the south entrance be signed as not a functional entrance?
Yes.
Mr. Mayor, are you okay with all of those conditions?
That's exactly what I was going to say.
Okay. Is there support for that?
Support.
I just have a question. I have a question regarding the light poles. Did, did that include the moving of the light poles?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
Who supported? I didn't catch that.
Just to clarify that, we'll, we'll relocate them as long as it meets the ordinance and we don't have to add additional pole lighting.
Agreed.
And who supported?
That was me.
Okay, the roll call, please.
Clark Martin.
Yes.
Dawson?
Yes.
Gregitis? Greg, Gregitis?
Yes, sorry.
Lord?
Yes.
McGee?
Yes.
Patricoff?
Yes.
Stone?
Yes.
Babacwa?
Yes.
Dixon?
Yes.
Thank you, Mr. Barnas. Good luck to you and welcome to town.
All right. Thank you for your time. Appreciate it.
By the way, do you have tenants in there right now?
It's about 50%. We're looking for another 50%. So if anybody knows healthcare providers that are going to, looking to be in a quality building, please let us know.
Very good. We look forward to you filling it up.
All right. Thank you. Bye now. Bye now.
Okay. Next item is number seven. This is a public hearing with the consideration of a special exception site plan to locate a recreational use within an I-1 industrial zoning classification for Maven Fitness located at 328 South Street. Madam Planner.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. At the city's request, we have reviewed a proposal from Mr. Gretsch to operate a fitness center at an existing building. The site is 2.51 acres in size, located on the south side of South Street and is zoned I-1, which is industrial one district. It is our understanding that the use was started and operated without any approvals originally. The applicant was directed to comply by seeking necessary approvals from the city. They appeared before the planning commission for a preliminary hearing on July 1 of 2019 and received feedback. They were asked to address questions and concerns raised at the meeting and in our review letter dated 21st of June, 2019. Subsequently, we met with the applicant and provided additional information. They appeared again before you since the time gap was so long and there were so many unaddressed issues. They appeared before you at your March 2 planning commission meeting and at this time they were scheduled for public hearing and I will share the site plan on my screen. If you'd give me a second, I will scroll to the Maven site plan. Here we go. With regard to the use, the site is occupied by 14,411 square foot existing building. The centers have previously been classified as indoor commercial recreation facilities by the city and it is permitted in the I-1 district subject to special exception approval. Now, the existing building is non-conforming and it does not meet the minimum best side yards of 15 feet. As you can see on the site plan, it's not only 5.84. This is an existing legal non-conforming structure. The applicant is not altering the footprint of the structure in any way. So the non-conformity is not getting worsened. With regard to vehicle access, the site has a single access drive of South Street. And this is extra wide. The applicant is planning one lane each for in and out. I had told the applicant that since this is extra wide, it looks like it can accommodate three lanes. But evidently, it's the applicant's intent to have only two lanes and I think this block came because of whiteout being used. So the applicant should make sure to put a center line through here and make sure that the drive is correctly straight for in and out because such a wide access drive gives the illusion of having three lanes and we don't want to have any conflict with multiple vehicles stacked up here. Once you enter the site, there is a two-way access drive. It goes all the way to, previously to the back of the building. That is no longer going to be allowed, so we had asked the applicant to install something to prevent vehicles from going to the back. And as a barrier, the applicant is proposing to install three 18-inch concrete planters, which per our recommendation will be planted with arbor whitey so that, you know, you have year-round greenery in those pots and they are just not bad. For the fire department, fire chief, this is acceptable because they have enough circulation around the other sides of the building and it will not block anything in the event of a fire. With regard to pedestrian access, a five-foot wide concrete sidewalk is required. With regard to pedestrian access, a five-foot wide concrete sidewalk is required along all public street frontages. Right now, South Street does not have a sidewalk along the frontage. Other businesses along South Street, the south side of South Street have signed onto a special assessment district for a sidewalk to be installed sometime in the future. If and then a sidewalk is installed, they will be required to participate. And the applicant has agreed to participate in such thing. There is no timeline for it at this time, but when it is there, the applicant will participate in it. The plan also proposes a seven-foot wide sidewalk in front here and barrier-free access ramp to provide access into the building. With regard to on-street parking, our ordinance does not specifically have indoor recreational use in fitness centers. So the standard that has previously been applied is based on IT standards, which is 321 space for every 1,000 square foot of floor area. Part of the site plan, 8,000 square foot of this building is being used for the recreational use by 6,211.5 square foot area. The applicant has been calculated the warehouse area as warehouse standard and said the required parking is 29 feet. But based on the site plan that we've calculated, it requires a total of 35. Now, the area that is marked as warehouse is not really an industrial use. It is the owner of the building who's using that portion for personal storage of his things. It is not a business at this time. So the site requires a total of 35 parking spaces, all of which have been provided, including two handicap accessible spaces. All of the spaces and the drive aisles meet the requirements of the ordinance. The ADA compliant space ramp details is subject to review by the building official to make sure that it meets the code. The parking lot will be provided with concrete curb and gutter. With regard to loading, the required 10 by 50 foot loading space is shown over here. While the applicant's recreational use might not have much use for the space, I'm sure the owner of the building is using to store her stuff, that loading space is going to come in use. With regard to trash removal, there is no dumpster shown on the site. We are not requiring any at this time because the business generates minimal trash which will be placed for curb site pickup. But we want the applicant to be aware and the owner of the building to be aware that if any portion of the building should be changed to an industrial use, a dumpster enclosure with gates will be required at that time. With regard to landscaping, the site has got a significant green area in front. The applicant is not disturbing any of it. All of the trees are to remain as is. They are adding a tree with shrubs and mulch in each of the landscape islands. Some of the existing landscaping will remain. The back area was previously used for parking of vehicles. There is no vehicles anymore and the whole intent behind this barrier was to prevent anybody from trying and storing vehicles here. This is a grass area. The applicant calls it established grass, but we want to make sure that it's not just low-growing weeds. This area has to be cleanly maintained as a lawn area, even if it has to just be seeded. With regard to lighting, the applicant has submitted photographs in view of elevations, which is acceptable. And the building, let me scroll over here, the building has got some light fixtures and the applicant is proposing to add new light fixtures. They have submitted manufacturer's touchy details of these fixtures, which does meet ordinance intent, but it says that these are going to be high intensity LED lights. Some of the newer LED lights are extremely bright white light. So the applicant needs to make sure it's not in close proximity to any dwelling or anything, but at the same time, we don't want excessive light pollution on sites, so the intensity should still match what is allowed by the ordinance. South Street also has light poles along the frontage of the site. The, this is the existing building. The applicant is proposing no significant changes to the building per se. It is the building is pretty much going to remain as is. As for signage, all the signage the applicant has is a logo over here and a logo on the side door. That's all the sign they are proposing at this time and that to the door, the sign is on a door on the east side of the building. Administration will review. It is well within the sign ordinance requirement. However, administration will review it for compliance. Typical question that has come up whenever we review a fitness facility is will the fitness center be using the public trail system as part of their exercise process? The site plan does include a note which states that some classes, I quote, entail running outdoors. It does not specify that it would be the Clinton River Trail, but Clinton River Trail is a little bit of a distance from the site itself. So we are talking about people crossing from here across South Street and then going to the trail which is somewhere up here. So with, finally, with regard to engineering, this is a new parking lot which is being built with curb and garden. So stormwater drainage is subject to review and approval by the city's engineer. Now, we have met with the applicant, the city has met with the applicant on several different occasions. At this point of time, I think we have a site plan that is reasonably good and is in a position for the planning commission to act on. So it is our recommendation that the planning commission grant site plan and special exception approval to Maven Fitness to be located at 328 South Street, subject to three conditions. First would be review of ADA compliant ramps by the building official. Second condition is applicant's acknowledgement that if any part of the building should change to an industrial use, a dumpster with enclosure will be required. And finally, engineering review and approval of the proposed new parking area. I'd be happy to answer any questions you might have.
Any questions for the planner?
Good evening, Vidya. I'm at school. Maybe I missed it at the beginning. Is the tenant already in the building and they're just adding a parking lot on the north side of the structure?
Yes, the tenant has been in the building for a while without approval and they are trying to do the right thing at this time.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Chair?
Yes, yes, please.
I know Vidya mentioned it in her report, but one of the conditions should be the execution of the special assessment district agreement that we've used for South, other South Street.
What is that? Is that the sidewalk?
Yes, yes, the sidewalks. If and when sidewalks are installed on South Street, they'd be required to install one. We have a couple of those agreements with other properties on South Street already.
Very good. Any other questions for the planner before I open the public hearing? How about the petitioner? Is he, is that person here tonight?
I believe an applicant's representative is here. See, or no, somebody was here, wasn't it?
Justin.
Yes, I am here. I don't know if you can hear me.
Yeah, we got you. We can see you and hear you now.
All right, great.
Any, any comments to the planner's presentation?
Yeah, if you want me to address a couple of the points, I certainly can. The one with the line that to delineate the egress and the ingress at the end of the driveway, we can certainly do that. We certainly will attest to the dumpster use if the change of the building ever happens and becomes an industrial use. There will be no public trail usage with any of the workouts. There hasn't been and there won't be typically. Number four, the ADA compliant ramps, we don't have an issue with that being, being approved. And I think that was it on, on the issues that were brought up. If there's any I've missed, let me know and I'd be happy to answer any of your questions.
What is the nature of the concrete planters that, that you are going to install at the end of the driveway?
Well, they're there specifically to deter people from driving to that back lot. There had been storage for a local car dealership behind the building. And this was, the city had brought up that they didn't want people to be able to have access back there to use it for parking. So this was something that would delineate where the driveway ends, but yet still be movable enough or allow for the fire department to get to the back of the building should need be.
Are these in place now?
There are some that are there now, yes, but we also have a couple big railroad ties that are going across there as well to deter the traffic, but they're not the planters that will be there.
Okay, the reason I pointed out, the planters that were there, I noticed recently were moved aside and there were vehicle tracks going toward the back of the building. I didn't know where they were going to, but it was pretty unsightly. So I just wanted to make sure that whatever's put into place, maybe a fire truck could push them out of the way, but I, I wouldn't want to have people be able to squawk out there and pick up a pot and move it aside because they wanted to drive back there.
Yeah, the ones that are there now are kind of that prefab. They're not even like a concrete material. And I think that the, the plan had specified for a certain type of planter that's, I believe it's concrete. Is that right, Vidya?
Yes, the previous plan that was submitted actually had just regular planters that we would have at home. And we had recommended that they need to have commercial-grade concrete planters because they can't be moved or budged. So they, the revised plan does include that. They previously showed the pot that you would buy in Home Depot and stick it in your front, which wasn't okay.
Okay, any other questions at this point? I'm going to open the public hearing. It's eight o'clock. And I'll ask if anyone is, has submitted in writing or electronically any comments relative to this proposed site plan. Maureen or Sienna, any, any communication?
No, we have not received communication from the public.
Okay, so we will close the public hearing at 8:01. And this item is now back before the planning commissioners for consideration.
Mr. Chairman, that's Nick Banda. We have, we can offer, we have the big giant cement planters that we have excess being stored at our yard off, off of Second Street that we'd be glad to donate to get rid of them. And they can't be moved once you set them down. So we'd be glad to donate two of those. We've been trying to repurpose them. If the petition were like that, they just have to get them delivered there, which
Justin, are you okay with that?
Yeah, absolutely.
Okay, that would solve my problem.
You're welcome.
I have a question for the applicant. Yes. So the parking spaces were, were determined based on the square footage. How many, what's the maximum number of class attendees?
Well, the, the maximum that I've ever seen at a, at a busy class would be about maybe 20 people per class.
So if you got a class with 20 people and you got another class with 20 people coming in behind it and you got trainers, that doesn't seem like enough parking to handle what could be 45, 46 people?
That is what the standard is. That's what I was told. We needed the hit. That was created by the, I believe it was the IT standard. Is that right?
Right.
So I, I do understand your concern on that. However, I can tell you at this point, we don't even have half that many parking spaces and we've never had an issue at all. And the building has been in use for, for three years and we literally if there's 15 cars there, that's a jammed parking lot for us, so.
I've been, I've been there for a tournament once and, and people were parking just anywhere all over grass and, you know, and basically free for all.
For sure. And that, that's an extenuating circumstance and we haven't had any tournaments there in quite some time and at least the year and a half that I've been there. I can't say it would never happen again in the future, but if that was the case, we would probably apply for some sort of permit to have, have an event and excess parking or whatever would be available. We also can use the parking lot next door if the event's on a Saturday because the guy that owns this building owns the one next door. And there's additional parking spaces there as well.
So, so I guess at the very least, what, what happens in the event of overflow if you do have the 20, 2020 classes stacked and you've got trainers? That's, that's again, it's pretty easy math. It's more than 35. What, what happens then? Where do they park? They can't go around back anymore.
No, they can't, but they can wait till the people that are leaving the class before them leave. You know, again, I, I can tell you, I've been there for a year and a half and we have half this many parking spaces and we've never had the issue. So I just, I can't foresee it to be an issue. You know, the driveway, the driveway is a pretty long driveway. It's almost 100 meters long in itself. So, you know, cars could line up on one side of the driveway and still allow egress on the other side of the driveway.
Okay. If I may, Mr. Chairman?
Yes, yes, ma'am.
Mr. Gretsch, my suggestion is if you're saying a maximum class will have 20 attendees and like Commissioner Babacqua says, then you will have your trainers. Maybe the class schedule can be such that you do not have classes with 2020 enrollees back to back because this fitness center, from what I understand, also does one-on-one training and also very small groups?
Most are really small groups and right now there is no class schedule that has classes that would have 20 participants back to back.
So maybe something to consider is to ensure that classes which allow for a maximum number of students, maybe a beginner training class, not be stacked one after the other. And I would definitely not recommend parking along the main drive because it's 25 feet wide. You park on one side, you're, you're essentially making it a one-way with no room to go and people will climb onto the grass. So parking along the driveway is not recommended. Maybe what the owners could do is not have back-to-back classes that are intended to accommodate more students. Maybe the 20-student class follows the students who are at a more higher level of intensity and training. So you have only five or six. That way you will not create a conflict that Mr. Babacqua is anticipating.
Absolutely. And that how, that is how it is designed right now. There is no classes back to back that I've ever have seen 20 people in. So, and we'll, we'll try to assure that that doesn't happen.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments?
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, I got a question.
Yes, sir.
I guess this is to Vidya. So the, so the standard is what it is, but then the 20 and 20, I mean, that just doesn't add up like Mayor Protem Babacqua says. I mean, I'm, I understand that's what the, what the number is. But it's like, we're like, it, it doesn't, it doesn't add up to me. So what are we supposed to do?
We have to stick to the zoning ordinance standards or the recommended standards. The only way to address that, we do sometimes have uses where the ordinance recommends something that is a benchmark. Some uses will be well below it. Some of the businesses being operated for that use would probably be more intensive depending upon how popular they are. The only way we can control it is possibly place a condition such as saying you cannot have classes that would create the need for more parking spaces than what is being provided on the site. Since this is a special exception, you can place such a condition on.
That seems like a very reasonable approach to this, that it be a condition of, of the approval that in fact, they can't create that situation. Any other comment? Okay, I think we've tested. At this point, the planner has recommended site plan approval, special exception approval. Is there anyone who would care to make a motion?
I guess I'll try my best at huddling together the actual motion. I would move for special exception approval and site plan approval. I'm sorry.
Yes.
Yes. With the exceptions that were already listed, with the addition of the condition that the classes not be scheduled so that they create a demand for parking that exceeds the parking that's currently available.
This could be like the only one who's not returned.
Yeah.
Is there support?
All these, also add the condition that the city attorney craft had referenced, that they sign on to the SAD just to make sure that it's also on record.
So incorporated.
Support is here. And that's been supported. The motion has been moved and supported. Any other discussion? Can we have the roll call, please?
Yes, Gassen?
Yes.
Gregitis?
Yes.
Lord?
Yes.
McGee?
Yes.
Patruskoff?
Yes.
Stone?
Yes.
Babacqua?
Yes.
Dixon?
Yes.
Clark Martin?
Clark Martin? Yes.
Thank you very much. Justin, good luck to you and and the and the organization.
Thank you, guys, and be safe.
All right, you too.
Thank you very much.
Okay, number eight discussion regarding the sustainability review.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I will just go to the sustain. If the planning commission recollects, uh, we had presented a new sustainability evaluation worksheet. The reason this came about was several, we have five major indicators. I'll I'll start it. The Sustainable Rochester process, this is a basic summary of how we went about creating the Sustainable Rochester study. And the result of the product was a methodology report, a pro- project evaluation worksheet. And it had a map book which had maps of local and regional data to help us understand. The original sustainability worksheet had six indicator criterias, each with several sub-criterias, each assigned one point. So the total score was out of twenty and the way it was broken down was the scoring components. This scoring component was developed because whenever special projects came before planning commission or city council, there was no standardized benchmarks. It was very subjective rather than being objective. To remove the subjectivity from it, the indicators were created so that everybody is being subjected to the same rules. Now, all of them were assigned one point each. So if a project scored less than eight points, it was considered as being non-sustainable. If it was between eight and fourteen, we said the project needed to mitigate, which means make certain changes to make it a more palatable or to meet the benchmarks and score more points. If it was fifteen and above, the project was considered as a sustainable project. Now, a sustainable project score is not a guarantee of approval, but it provides real good guidance to the city in approving or denying projects. The problem came when several of the indicators on the chart included DDA, DDA-related businesses. Many of them had to do with single-family residential or multiple-family residential uses. Now, for a project such as a warehouse, they automatically cannot score eight out of the twenty indicators. And so even if they did their best, they can score maybe twelve points out of twenty, which technically is not considered as a sustainable project. So the city directed us to revisit it and create categories which accommodated all types of uses, residential uses, non-residential uses, whether they are located in the DDA, whether they are not located in the DDA. So it created two major categories. And once the two major categories were created, which was DDA and non-DDA, under each of these categories, we split it up into mixed use, residential use, and non-residential use. Originally, each of these indicators got just one point. But now, when we came to the new scoring pattern, we granted weighted averages. For instance, a non-residential project located in a non-DDA location gets a higher score for walkability, which means it is more important to provide pedestrian connectivity. So if they are providing it, they get a higher score. Whereas some of the indicators were not applicable and went to blank. But in the end, all of them would still have to try and attain the twenty-point score. The twenty-point score still remains. So the breakdown of when a project is considered sustainable continues to remain the same. The planning commission had directed me to take a look at projects that had already been through the sustainability evaluation and see how they would score on our new sustainability worksheet. So this is the point score that remains consistent with our original project evaluation and in the new worksheet too. Now, the first project that I re-scored was Blossom Mills. If the planning commission recollects, this was a one hundred and thirty-seven unit, six-story senior residential facility at the corner of Elizabeth and East Second. Original project score was fifteen out of twenty. So no mitigation was required and the project did score all points in environmental health, mobility, which is means pedestrian traffic, movement, and fiscal strength, which is what it contributes to the tax base. They did not score for housing affordability, but the applicant did state that they would have some vouchers for disabled veterans to sort of meet a little bit of that requirement, but I don't think they were given a point for it. So originally, the points possible were one for each, and this was what is said as current score was the score that was given to them. They scored fifteen out of twenty. Now, if it's not located within the DDA, it is a residential development. So these were technically the scores that would be applicable for each one of the indicators. The indicators that would not be applicable to this project was workforce development, historic preservation, which basically historic preservation is line of side diagrams. No building shall overwhelm the downtown or its historic character. And finally, business attraction. So no points were scored for this. So based upon the revised score that they were given, Blossom Mills scored fourteen point five. It actually scored less than what it originally had. Now, the next project we tried scoring was Rewall Sun and Warehouse. In the original twenty indicator criteria, six of the points were not even applicable. This was a one-story industrial warehouse building on South Street. Initially, their sustainability scoring was ten out of twenty. They could not score anything for housing, accessible open space, since this was a gated, secure facility. Nor could they score any points for DDA, workforce, historic preservation. Their final score they landed up was eleven out of fourteen because planning commission decided six of the indicators were not even applicable. However, if we look at it through the reversed, through the revised score, non-DDA project points possible, they scored only thirteen out of twenty, which means the project technically is not sustainable again. Third project we looked at was the Overlook. The Overlook is a seventy-two-unit condominium complex that is on Levica, just south of the OPC. Originally, they scored nine out of uh, two points were not applicable because it was well out of DDA. So their total target was eighteen. They scored only nine, so they had to mitigate. In order to mitigate, they added a ten-inch sanitary line, eight-inch water main, and created a loop system, which was definitely beneficial to the city. They also gave site diagrams. Site, although it is far away from downtown, site diagrams were important for the overlook simply because the site has got such dramatic grade changes. It drops forty feet from its north to south end. And then they hadn't submitted enough information regarding how they would contribute to the tax base. So once all that was turned in, they scored thirteen out of eighteen and were passed on.
Vidya, can I interrupt real quick with a question? So would is that new score with the work that they did with with the lines and everything that you
Yes. The revised score of fourteen point five on twenty is giving them credit for everything that they have done, including new lines, loop, water main, everything. So this project too did not score.
Why would they only get point five for parking efficiency? I had the same question for Moseri.
Yes, because these are non-DDA. Parking matters more in DDA downtown-located projects. Hence, the scoring criteria for projects that are within the downtown is greater. Like if you look at the worksheet of what we are suggesting, if it happens to be located in the DDA and it's a residential project and you go to parking, you go to parking efficiency and things to do with traffic, your scoring capability is a lot higher, two, two point five, one point five, non-motorized infrastructure. The scoring point is greater, parking
On both Moseri and Overlook, they could have earned point five for parking, but they both got zeros, even though they're both self-parked.
Yes, parking parking efficiency basically means you're creating new public parking. Moseri originally did show parking up on Elizabeth on East Second Street. They showed on-street parking spaces and originally they scored points for it. That's why they got one point originally. But the DPW reviewed it and said they did not want parking spaces on East Second Street. It would create a problem and it's not in the interest of circulation. When planning commission granted approval, it was subject to DPW review of the on-street parking spaces. So the final plan of Blossom Mills did not have any on-street parking, hence they got zero. That's why they lost that point.
Yeah.
Uh, so technically, they were intending to do the right thing, but it was just not feasible. It was impossible. Uh, Rewald did not score a lot of points for the simple reason that it is a gated warehouse facility. They don't want people walking through there. So basically, it's you know, calling it a walkable or anything is not even going to happen. So they did not
But we would have our, we would not have approved Rewalt under this new criteria.
Technically, based upon the new review scores given, you would have asked Rewalt, Blossom Mills, and the Overlook, all three to go back and mitigate. You wouldn't have sent any of them onwards. You would have asked them all to revise. Which brings me to the Riverfront Place. This is the only project that has actually scored a sustainability score based upon the old and the new. Surprisingly enough, if you look at all the criteria of what they scored, this project went through the wringer and I think the reason for their high scores is because they have been before the planning commission so many times. Every time you send them back, they made a change, however minor, in order to try and score more points. So if you look at Riverfront Place's scores, they tried their best to maximize their score wherever they could. And these scores were not easily granted. I checked each and every one point to make sure that they actually earned it. And this was the only project that actually managed to reach the threshold of fifteen.
Good.
So what we realized when we applied it across the board based upon the new workability is none of the special projects that we have approved so far have met the sustainability standards if we apply this new weighted averages score. So our sustainability minimum score is fifteen, Blossom Mills fourteen point five, same with Overlook. Uh, Rewald Warehouse is only thirteen. And you know, some of them are scoring lower with the new system, which means we are raising the bar a little bit higher. That's exactly what it would it would mean. So I thought this was very, very interesting. Um, at our last planning commission meeting, when we discussed Riverfront Place and we had projects such as First Street Lofts come forth and present their objection to it. I did not have enough data to run a full score, but a project such as First Street Loft, which came before we developed sustainability criteria, would not, would have probably scored in single digits. So pretty much they would have gotten zero for any natural features, preservation, um, a lot of things. They would not have scored any points on. So the sustainability worksheet is pretty, pretty revealing. It actually shows with multiple revisions how a project has tried hard this. However, as I clarified at the beginning, this was adopted as a policy by the city. It did not say just because you got a sustainable score that you automatically are guaranteed approval. But at the same time, this gives the planning commission the opportunity to tell the applicant, no, you have not met our threshold for what we consider as a project we would like to look at and take to the next phase. So if you had received a project such as the Overlook or Rewall Warehouse, you would have definitely have sent them back to mitigate.
Let's let's look at Rewalt. What just looking at this, what could they have possibly done to improve their score here?
They could have installed a lot more trees because if you look, they scored zeros for natural features, protection, and development balance. Uh, non-motorized infrastructure, if I go back to the to the categories here, let me go to this so you will know. Okay. So environmental health, developmental balance. So this would be somewhere where they would not, they didn't take out too many trees, but they would install a lot more trees to in- increase the viable tree cover on the site. Rewalt did not require much tree cover because the back portion of their property was completely sloped upwards and they were leaving it untouched. So they said, we are, you know, we are sustainable. So in the original criteria, they did get a point for it, but they could have scored a point five. We could have asked them to add more trees. Uh, natural features protection, we could have gotten them to do more landscaping. In terms of walkability, they have a sidewalk, but they have gates blocking it, so nobody can get any further. Maybe the way they could have scored a point there is, you know, Rewalt is the, one of the properties located before you climb up the hill and go. So if somebody is going for a walk, maybe they could have been required to create a bench or something like that, that actually
I don't remember. Did they sign the South Street commitment to put a sidewalk in?
They already have a sidewalk along their site frontage.
Okay.
There's their sidewalk was put in when some sewer work was done by the city a few years ago in that area, so they already had the sidewalk. So it wasn't something new that they could score on. Uh, non-motorized infrastructure, they really are contributing nothing, nothing to it. Uh, some of, they could have scored possibly for pipe maintenance, but the challenge was new pipes were just installed in that particular area along their site's frontage, so they didn't have a chance to score, but uh, we could have definitely made them do something with regard to environmental health. Free cover, we could have done something with regard to mobility that might have pushed pushed them slightly over, you know, in terms of, if I go back to, let me go back to Rewalt. They could have possibly scored one over here, um, maybe even one point five over here. A non-motorized infrastructure, at least some of these points, some point could have been scored. Pipe maintenance and condition, I don't know, maybe they've spoken to the DPW or city's engineer and seen if there was something else they could do. It basically gives developers an opportunity to to build better sites, not just invest the minimum required to get the business up and running.
I understand. It makes it makes good sense. So the tool is working.
Yes, the tool is working. The question now is, do you want to keep with your existing uh, twenty-point score, which the planning commission had issues with because, you know, we are evaluating a warehouse for housing mix and housing affordability. Obviously, they can never score. And former Mayor Ray was not in support of lowering the bar. I said the only way we can do it is for non-residential developments or non-DDA, the total score from twenty has got to be reduced. And I don't think the planning commission had any desire to change the indicator score total or the division between non-acceptable projects, projects that need mitigation, and the projects that are sustainable. They wanted to keep the twenty and the less than eight, eight to fourteen and fifteen and above consistent. In which case, the sliding scale works. So if the planning commission would like to look into this some more, this was adopted as a policy. So I would have to defer to Jeff whether we have to schedule this for a public hearing before planning commission adopting the new worksheet and sending it on to city council. I'm not sure what, I can't remember what process was followed the first time around when we adopted it, but I would defer to the city attorney and Nick in guiding us on how we should go, should the planning commission choose to proceed with it.
Commissioners, any comments on this?
Uh, this is Eric here. Just just a quick, um, I don't know, thought. Um, when I'm looking at like even the Rewalt sheet there, um, up at the top, it says six points were not applicable, right? So the the score was really at a fourteen because we determined that
Correct.
It, I, you know, it strikes me that a few of the examples that we talked about here, they're really, although the point technically could have been available to them, the feasibility of the site, whether, you know, there is brand-new pipe that was recently installed, so there was really no way to up the the pipe maintenance, or they tried to do on-street parking, but it was determined that, you know, that wasn't operationally feasible.
Correct.
Sort of being penalized for something that they're just, it's almost like that point's not available to them in certain regards. Not all the time, and maybe there's other ways around it. There's no ability right now to remove that as a possible point unless I'm unless I'm missing it. So uh, I I I don't at all want to um make this less strict or or stringent, but but I also want to make sure that we're not putting a system in that's got points that aren't even attainable.
Okay, well, it's almost as though they should receive some credit for picking a site that has good infrastructure. I mean, somebody did it before them. They didn't pick a site that needed help that, you know, this this particular site already had it done.
Would it help if those criteria, for example, the Rewalt, I mean, even if he wanted to do pipe maintenance and upgrade, nothing was available to upgrade. So like Commissioner Lord says, well, even if he said he would do it, he simply couldn't have pride for those points. Would some form of um information over there or credit for picking a site that doesn't need an upgrade work?
Maybe half a point or something like that.
Well, you know, and the other the other thought would be, you know, if if there's pipe condition issues or pipe maintenance issues elsewhere in the system, if if Blossom Mills is gonna bring one hundred and thirty-seven units onboard, you know, the 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 pipe maintenance or the improvement may not be at their front door. It may be downstream somewhere where where maybe there's still the ability for them to contribute. I guess my point is, is I think uh, to me, um, it it may be worth examining whether or not we believe that a point is feasible or not. And that could be a, you know, not a very simple answer, but but if if the answer after looking at it is that it's it's just truly not available to them, I hate to see them get dinged for it. But on the other hand, you know, I think it's worth investigating these points if it's if if there's a way to still offer a way for them to achieve the point, even if it's not right at their core.
I think you make a great, great point because the city's infrastructure is aging. I think you make a great, great point because the city's infrastructure is aging. Even if the infrastructure along that particular site's frontage is new, is the added load coming from this site adding a burden further downstream uh, on an infrastructure that is already aged? If we can do, I do need to discuss, um, I, I think that's a great point to make because the point might be attainable. It might just help towards, um, infrastructure development further along the line, like, like an SED or something. But we'll have to review the legality of it because I want to be very careful that we are not requiring off-site improvements.
Yep. It's very similar to parking and lieu, right? I mean, if, you know, if, if parking isn't available to somebody, they can pay for parking and lieu. Well, that, that, that could be spent elsewhere, right? To basically deal with parking issues within the city itself, not necessarily at their front door.
Yeah.
That's not a monetary value for each space, like the city has got an established monetary value of seven thousand dollars per space. In case of infrastructure, the challenge would be, how would you say how much money is okay?
Correct. I, I get it. Yep. No, I understand.
If I, can I just wait for one second? I, you gotta be really careful. That's a slippery slope. You, if their capacity does not exceed anything downstream, they, you can't require them to put off-street, off-site money like Vidya alluded to, to be careful about that when their capacity does not change anything. That, that's a, that's a negotiated exaction, which is illegal. Second, when we talked about, like on Rewalt's, um, property, why wouldn't they get credit for a sidewalk that's already there? If they were smart enough to pick a site that didn't need a sidewalk, had pipes big enough to get the water under the river, under the road to the river, yet we don't give them a point, that's dingin' them. So.
That's, that was my point is that perhaps we give them the points anyway.
Okay, so if they already, so if they already have the sidewalk and what is required, even if it just happened to already be there, do we give them credit and points for it?
Absolutely, because it's there.
Okay, okay, that makes, okay.
I'd like, I, I just like to say that we have to keep in mind too that this isn't a strip pass fail either. Like, we, we can apply common sense to this.
Correct.
And, and we could discuss these issues, um, during the evaluation process without necessarily having to, uh, put the points on, on the chart.
True, true. Somebody scored.
There should be some latitude there. Um, we also don't want to make it so that we're providing points for things that are already in place. I, 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 I get, I get the argument, but, uh, at the same time, you know, we do have some latitude.
And I think it is understood just although the sustainability worksheet says fifteen and above is mitigation range. If a project scores thirteen because four other points are already there in terms of sidewalk this, the Planning Commission can decide that they have still done a good job and send them on. It doesn't mean that they are fail necessarily.
Right.
They've done the things within their control. They've done the things within their control. And that's, that's why I don't want to penalize.
Maybe when we do a sustainability evaluation worksheet, when I do that, if the improvement is already there, even if they don't get a point, as footnotes, it'll be clearly noted over there, existing sidewalk thereby couldn't. So the Planning Commission knows that the points are not being scored, not because of the applicant not willing to do it, because the improvement already exists and cannot be improved upon anymore.
Mr. Stone, Mr. Stone, what do you think?
Uh, my question is the school impact, item thirteen. Are we awarding points to businesses that do not put students in our district? Or are we giving them credit for when a student is potentially added and tax dollars are raised?
No, I, I believe the school impact is not adding students to the system. It is, uh, the tax increase that contributes to schools. I think that's what it was intended, not per se to add individual student counts to, uh, the school district.
So Blossom Mills is a senior community. Uh, what about the, uh, the Overlook? There could be students there. Did they, how did they score on thirteen?
You're just looking at the school taxes that are contributed.
Yes. So school taxes wise, they, you know, they contribute, they still get point five. But you're right, Overlook probably will have children coming to schools versus Blossom Mills, which won't.
Right. But they'll contribute a substantial amount of money to the school taxes.
Right. In my opinion, Blossom Mills would score higher than the rest, correct? They're not putting any kids in, but they're raising a ton of money.
Oh, interesting.
That's what we are looking at.
We didn't consider s- kids, numbers of kids, I don't think, did we?
No, no, we, we don't consider a number of, not everyone chooses to have kids or, you know, so.
There's tax impact.
Only tax impact. You give money into the system and it's.
Right. We don't want your kids. We can.
Well, the school just, for, for every kid, the school gets like seventy-five hundred dollars per kid.
Yeah.
So if there are kids, it's a double value.
Yeah, right.
Correct, correct. Good point. It would be added value too. And something like Riverfront Place will contribute a lot because, you know, if you're having apartments, especially for younger families, you're gonna have lots of children in the system.
So that's a, that's a, they, they would get, in theory, they'd get more points than someplace else that doesn't have kids in it.
Yeah, I guess everybody gets only point five because, you know, all these projects are contributing to the tax base. But yeah, they would score a lot more than some of the others.
You, you have to do the net analysis though. Is seventy-five hundred dollars gonna pay for that extra kid? Or is that kid gonna drain more than seventy-five hundred dollars out of the system? So.
But, but Nick, I, I, if I recall, when we did sustainability, we did not consider children head count.
Right.
Control if we're doing that. So I don't think that would necessarily be appropriate.
That would be something new. That would be something new.
We, we had talked about it and it seems like, uh, you should get a point for that because that does sustain the schools. But the balance we came up with was tax dollars, no strain in the schools. I don't think we thought there would be any kids ever coming in.
Well, I mean, you, you know, you, you could argue this all day long. I mean, you guys know I'm, I'm a teacher, but all the, the money that the schools get comes from the general fund. It's not from local taxes. So in reality, this is wrong because it's not local, local taxes that go to the schools. The schools get funded out of the state's general fund and that's based on a number of students.
Right. But it is new tax dollars put into the school, the state school fund.
I think the mayor said we don't proportionally get it back necessarily.
Right.
Which is a good point.
I guess that's why it has got very limited scoring for everybody because funding doesn't necessarily translate so many more kids means the school is going to get so many more, more dollars directly because that comes from another pipeline, although all this feeds into it. So I guess that's why the scoring is at point five for that.
So, so then would everybody just get point five and it's irrelevant? Should we substitute out school impact for something else that might be more impactful to the community?
We can look at it, but I think it's a very important, uh, indicator when you look at the school impact. Yes, school impact because part of it comes under, if you, if you look at the original sustainability report, school impact was classified under public, uh, public services. So the details of why it was included is over there and it formed a part of that development component. School impact is an essential component of development, development projects because it does impact.
But would you, would you go back Vidya though and look at the actions of the Sustainability Committee? And what we said school impact was, I think it was only taxes. These, these points are good. It's just that they're a change. We'd have to go back and amend the definition of school impact from what we've been doing all along.
I'll take a look at what was originally analyzed in the school impact and I, I will email it to all of you.
Yeah, I, I'm not against it. I'm just saying, won't every applicant, since they're investing money in our community?
Absolutely, absolutely. Everyone will get it.
Yeah.
Everyone will get it.
All right. And, and this gets back to all this stuff is just kind of a roadmap, roadmap. We have to have common sense and look at each one individually and things like that.
I think what we were looking for is consistency. So we're being, we're playing it fair with ourselves in terms of evaluating these things, but also with the applicants. And, you know, the, the intent was to come up with higher quality development in the city. And I, when you look at that list of items of, of projects you just went through, they fit the bill. I mean, these are high-quality investments.
The other one I would question, since you guys called me out, uh, number five, the traffic one. Have, have we had an applicant tell us yet that their, uh, traffic study proved that they will impact in a negative way our traffic?
You should have been at the last meeting.
I know. I, I do apologize for this.
Unfortunately, I mean, I have reviewed a lot of traffic reports. There's been only one traffic report, I think in the last ten years, I saw there the traffic engineer had recommended addition of axle, these are lanes and a light.
They got fired, so they never did that again.
Yeah.
So how would the Planning Commission like to proceed next? I will get you information on what was looked at for the school impact. Uh, and also, uh, we might not change this weighted, uh, scores, but whenever an applicant does not have the possibility of earning a point because improvement already exists, we will add footnotes in there so that the Planning Commission can make an informed decision.
But I guess that you take that back and you and John go over the feedback we gave you tonight. I think this is very valuable and you give us another iteration in a month or two?
Yes.
I shall do that.
Does that make sense?
That makes great sense. I'd like to bring it back to you soon so we can at least keep it moving. We've been discussing it for a while. I'd like to get right on it and get it back.
Okay. Thank you very much. That was very insightful. All right, um, item number nine miscellaneous. Do we have any miscellaneous? I hear some grumbling, but no talking. There isn't any. Any further public comment? I, I'd just say I commend all of you for, uh, putting up with this. It's a little awkward, but I can see where it could become a, a lot better, a lot smoother. The, uh, Sienna, the software you picked here has, uh, done a fantastic job. I gotta say, I'm impressed with, with what it's able to do. And I do suspect we'll be doing this for a while, uh, everything we're hearing. It sounds like this is the direction things will be going. Any other comments on that?
Dennis? Um, one of the things that we did, uh, at the council meeting, uh, virtually, there is a, a hand raise function, um, that, that can be accessed so that if you want to, uh, chime in, you can.
Oh, very cool.
And you could.
Anna, would you look into that for, for me? And you can teach me about that before the next meeting.
Yes, I mentioned it when we had our one-on-one training, but it's okay.
And I missed that. And I missed that because I was in Florida.
It's okay.
Not that the Planning Commission needs it, but if you want to vote of confidence as far as the system, I know there's been some concerns uh, with FBI recommendations and whatnot with regard to Zoom. But I was, it was indicated to me that that may not be an issue with the paid service. Well, indicate that all of the courts are currently using Zoom. I've had, uh, multiple hearings now in circuit court, uh, that were via Zoom and depositions and everything's been working smoothly so far. So.
What an amazing time to put a product on the market. Yeah, just amazing. Any other, uh, business for the Planning Commission?
Mister Chairman.
Yes, yes, sir.
We're working from an outdated agenda, but I see an item number eight, site plan special exception for a project redevelopment of existing office space into residential apartments on the one thirty west universities.
I don't have that.
If I may, Mister Chairman?
Yes.
Uh, I did a preliminary review of the plan. It was in no shape to come before the Planning Commission. So I discussed it. Yeah, I discussed it with Nick and, uh, Blaine and we have spoken to the applicant and the applicant is going to revise their plan and bring it back before you. I will be speaking to, uh, the occupant.
So the agenda we've been working on then is, uh, correct and that, that project's not on tonight.
Correct.
Right.
Very good.
My packet was just out of date. I have the other documents, but I would concur with what the planner stated.
Very good. Okay. Best of luck to all of you. Stay healthy and, and we'll talk to you, uh, the next time. This, this meeting.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, everybody. Good job.
Appreciate it.
Good luck, Brian.
Thanks, sir. Appreciate it.